The actual document, but the, the way the tax services work, you're not getting all your payments as, as quickly. I mean, maybe she, maybe she is, but by the time you get all the payments and from the tax services and the straggler payments, and then issue demands, I, I would think that that it might be taking her longer than 15 days to get a demand notice out. Additionally, because you have to send a file to the tax, uh, to the bill printing company and they need a minimum of three days. I'm just saying, I don't think you're me, I think that's too aggressive. Um, so I would want input from the collector before that happens. Also, I would say that there are several references in this policy to the finance director, of which we don't currently have that I'm aware of. And so it should, from the time we adopted, it should represent what we have in place at that point in time. I also would like to confirm where the, if we did accept this, where we actually publish the notices. Because I don't know if that's accurate also. So then, it's not, I, I read this two different ways. The first time I read it one way and then I read it again, within 60 days of the tax taking announcement. No, actually. Uh, no, that's not the right one. Hold on. So the tax ta, the collector will begin the tax taking process within 60 days of the demand notice. I don't know what we're referring to as tax taking process. Are we referring to the process of collecting delinquent taxes, or to me, a tax taking process is actually advertising, filing a lien on the properties? So I'm not clear what that means. Um, but again, I seriously doubt that's being done in 60 days now. And in the section where you just said, where it was September 1st versus, you said June for what section? That was section?
Right under tax taking. Yeah.
Thank you.
Collector will send at least one enforcement letter to delinquent property owners as a courtesy.
Right, so she will publish a notice of taking in a local newspaper. I don't, again, I would want clarification from Carolyn that she's actually starting her tax taking process. You're, you just said change it to June 1st, I think you said?
That's when she does it.
I don't think she does. I, I would want, I would want confirmation.
I like, yep, no problem.
And then somewhere in here, there's like a blank where it says, we'll advertise in the newspaper. But it doesn't have the newspaper. Um, it says, in, it says like name of local newspaper.
Yeah, we're gonna change that to say local paper. We're not gonna put a specific name of a newspaper in there.
Okay.
Those newspapers change.
I think there's legislation pending to that. It can be online.
It's never gonna pass.
Probably not. We can be hopeful.
Yeah. And then under tax payment, ta, the tax title payment agreements, again, if this section is subject to the adoption of tax title payment agreement ordinance, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't be willing to approve a policy that has that type of stuff in it. We either have that, we either have that or we don't have it. You know, I don't think the policy should just, this, this is just kinda like all the stuff that they threw into this policy and we don't have that, so.
Do we have the tax title payment agreement ordinance?
You don't need an ordinance to have a tax title agreement, a tax title payment agreement with people. There, it's referenced in Mass General Law.
But it says only, oh, I see what you mean. The wording says that this section is subject to the adoption of that.
Right, which is then I believe everything below it, because that section, I didn't look it up, but I assume that section is the section that talks about the 50%.
Well, we don't need to have that, you're saying?
No, it's, so I'm just saying, like, I think it needs to be cleaned up a little, but, I mean, here's the problem I have. When a policy is so specific that it has like these hard dates in it, I don't think that that's what the po, I don't think a policy should have hard dates. I think it should have generalized dates. So if we say, like, there's a section about subsequent taxes, and I would be 100% on board with saying subsequent taxes should be, um, done before June 30th, because that reduces your receivable. That makes total sense to me. And then if we wanna say that by a cer, a date certain, um, you know, a tax taking will be done for the previous year's taxes, I think that's fine to say. But to be like so specific of a demand will go out in this number of days, and then this will happen in this number of days. That's really hard to adhere to all the time. So I would rather have it just be less specific as to,
Makes sense.
Next Friday, we're gonna do this, and then somebody's out sick for a week, and then that doesn't happen, we just broke the policy.
Right.
That's just my, my thoughts, so, um. Sorry to throw so, so much stuff out, but.
So we're just gonna push this one to next meeting?
I don't think it.
Yes.
We can. I mean, if you guys wanna talk about the, um, that section of Mass General Law, then that would have to come up.
I'd make a motion table it till you, you get the information that you asked for.
So we can either talk to Carolyn or get her in here for May. That's possible.
Okay, next one is policy, um, other post-employment benefit liability, OPEB.
So, let's see. The only one that I wanted to change on this is the B where it says trust and trustees to manage the invest, to manage and invest the OPEB fund. The town will maintain an irrevocable trust administered by a board of trustees, considering of the town manager, finance director, treasurer, one town counselor, and two town council designees. That's overkill. Uh, we've been managing our OPEB monies for years without any issue. I honestly don't even really feel like we need this policy. But I've been asked to bring the financial policies before the council, so I started to do that. But, so I would just remove that section on the trust and trustees and, um, perhaps also section D, the investment, um, because we already have over $100,000 in our OPEB account right now. And we don't wanna do any of this part D stuff. So I would, I would recommend removing, uh, part D, the investment, and part B, the trust and the trustees. Uh, our current OPEB liability is $36,971,439.
What was that? Sorry.
Uh, I was just gonna say, please don't remember this number. It changes all the time. But it's 36,971,439. Uh, but it's a number based upon actuarial data, so it can fluctuate. It can actually fluctuate rather significantly. Uh, we currently have 139,948 dollars in the OPEB account.
Thirty-eight thousand, you just said?
I'm sorry, 139,948 dollars. Uh, every budget, uh, every fiscal year, we put aside $10,000 as our annual recommended contribution towards the OPEB liability.
I could have sworn that during the last round of, um, union contracts, we had added OPEB liability to.
Yeah, they would have to give back 1%.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's been going back into that account also? It doesn't seem like there's much in there.
One, 1% from the employees is not driving it.
Well, I'm not saying we're getting rich off of it, but I mean, it was a start somewhere, because right, you said we had to come up with another funding source, because the town would never be able to, to come up with it on its own.
Most, most of the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts will never, ever, ever meet their OPEB liability.
Right, not just Palmer. I'm just saying, in generally, yes.
The city of Worcester's is approaching 2 billion. Their annual recommended, uh, contribution is 1.8 million. They put barely $100,000 a year towards it.
Oh, wow.
Right.
I got it.
Everybody looks at this the same way.
What is the li, so just for people at home who are watching, what is the OPEB liability mean?
Other post-employment benefits.
So where does that 36 million come into play? Like, what would happen for the town to be liable for 36 million dollars?
Oh, well, for everything all at once?
Yeah, what would have to hap, I'm just kinda curious. What is it for? Like, where did, where does the liability come into play? Is that retirement? Is that people who have retired, who are like on like the town-funded, like, medical plans? Like, how, where does this come from? Cause even I don't know.
I'm trying to think of, uh, can you help me out? I'm trying to think of all of the different benefits, um, that come into OPEB.
It's the health insurance costs for retirees when they retire.
That's the biggest one.
That's the biggest one. So people retire and they're still on our health plan, that we still have to cover a portion of that health plan, correct?
Yeah, so it's just like a retirement plan, so like, you have to, like, depend, whichever retirement, so like Worcester, uh, Worcester Regional Retirement, Hampden County, Hampden Regional Retirement, or, in, like, City of Springfield, probably, I think they have their own retirement, as do other communities. So there is a amount that you need to fund to cover all future payments going forward, and so it's a similar thing. So we're, you know, I don't know what Palmer's number is, but it's probably like in the 2 million or more range every year for Hampden Regional Retirement. I don't know. Um, but anyway, the, the thought process is that once communities get to their full funding for retirement, they can then take that funding obligation for retirement and start fund, and take that number and start putting it towards their OPEB liability. And so it, the number changes based on, it's an actuarial thing, so it's based on the age, you know, it looks at the age of people. You know, how long they're expected to live, right, all that, all of that stuff, that I'm not an actuary, so, but, you know, and then it fluctuates based on also like the number of employees you have. And it also fluctuates based on the percentage that the town community pays for their health insurance costs. So if a community paid 50%, their liability would be, so two communities, they both have the same number of employees. One pays 50% towards their insurance, one pays 80% towards their retiree insurance. The liability would be greater in the community that had
Got it.
80%. That's kind of in a nutshell what it is.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
So, you know, I, I don't, I don't like this policy. The policy that I think we should have is a policy that basically says, and again, I don't like really, no offense to the state, but I, I think a lot of these policies don't need to be policies. Um, they're just daily, you know, it's Mass General Law and how different departments do their job. The policy that I was looking for, for a F-O-P-E-B policy, is a commitment that we are going to put a certain amount of money, uh, at least a s, if it's 50,000 or 20, you said it's 25 is what we do now?
Ten.
Oh, ten.
How does that cover everything?
It doesn't, that's the thing.
Wow.
Forgive me Barb for, I'm trying to wrap my head all around this, the, the OPEB money that you're talking about and stuff, obviously happened before I had got on the council or whatnot, but. So this, from what I'm listening to and comprehending is, this is all money that we got that we, we have to pay back. Is I hearing the word liability?
No, it's our liability on the books, so we have to try to fund that liability, so.
Okay.
Ryan said it's 36 million dollars, so that means every employee that's on the books now, when they look at that snapshot, going forward based on life expense expectancy, when they're gonna, you know, male life expectancy is different than female life expectancy to this whole thing.
Sort of like the retirement fund.
Imagine you have your pension with the town of Wales, because you're cloud for them, right?
Right, right.
So, and, and, you know, I'm just gonna,
Yeah, I, I figure I understand.
Phil lives to be 80 years old, right? But you're 60 now, so they have a tw, they have you as a liability for that 20 years.
It's kind of a sick job. You're playing the odds on people's lives.
Well, that's what actuarial.
Actuary, yeah, that's what I meant.
So what communities do is we pay as you go.
I, I, I was mixing it up with some, I totally understand, you know, retirement money and when, I get it.
But they don't want us to pay as we, they don't want you to pay as you go. They want you to have a set up, s, money set aside to cover future obligations.
I totally get why. You never will, but.
Well, I don't, and I don't even know when it became, it used to just be this number. And then they were like, no, you know, they changed one of the GASP's, I don't know which one, but one of the accounting rules that said, now you have to account for this liability.
Right.
And so now we do. And there, there are probably a handful of communities that have funded.
Yeah, Newtons and Welles.
But, you know, the chances of us doing that, but I, to me, the policy shouldn't be this stuff. I, I, you know, one of, I don't, I mean, I'm glad you don't agree with the trust committee and all that, cause I think that's totally overkill and not necessary. But I, I do think a policy should be very specific as to, you know, what is our funding commitment going forward, and then we as a council decide what that is, and then it's going forward, then that has to be funded every year as part of the budget process.
All right, so if I get anything out of these two policies, it's that we wanna simplify these into something that works for us.
I put, again, financial policies to me are specific policies regarding free cash balances, stabilization balances, like what, what, that's what bonding agencies look for, is what are, what are your financial policies? So they don't wanna see you below those policies. So if you say, and again, if you say our stabilization balance should be 10% of our operating budget, and you have a written policy which they asked to have, and then you're only funding 2%, they're gonna ding you when you go out to borrow money, because, and your bond rating is gonna reflect that. Those are the type of policies that I'm trying to have us establish, is very specific policies. And then, that gives a pra, a framework for moving forward to say, okay, this is how much money we wanna have set aside in reserve, so if something catastrophic happens, it's the same thing, like, we should have a policy for sewer. Is how much do we wanna set aside in the sewer fund balance? And then that way, and, and I'm not, you know, sometimes things happen and you have to dip into that pol, that fund, and I get that. But it also makes more educated decisions as far as, you know.
And, you know, budgeting and.
Right, and, and it also, we should be looking at those policies on a yearly basis as part of the budget process to say, okay, you know, what's, what's our target number, and then we decide moving money in and moving money out. I mean, I, again, I, I don't need this number now, but when we get into budget sub, um, you know, how much do we have in stabilization? How much, like, where are our pers, where are our percentages, and where should they be? And, um, you know, again, you know, we should, we should, you know, I, you know, I disagree with taking all the free cash and just dumping it into stabilization. But, you know, if we had a policy that said, our number's 10%, then we're like, no, we don't have to dump any more money in stabilization. We can do other things. And then there's other stabilizations, like if we were doing, so we're gonna need, in my opinion, a track stabilization account, because we committed as a council that if we supported that project, we knew as soon as it was built, we, I think it's 10 years, was the, like, seven to 10 years? Yes, and so, so we're gonna need to do that, and those are the things that we should be looking at going forward, not just dumping it all in. You know, we wanna earmark some stuff for specific things. And so, you know, we could have a policy on the track that says, you know, we as a council are committing to out of the budget every year, or out of the free cash balance. We are going to move yearly, whatever that number is. Again, I, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but I know Ty and Bond gave us what that estimated cost would be. Those are the kind of financial policies I'm talking about, not the stuff of just what we do for, but I said that, like, I don't know, how long have you been here? Five years, six years? I don't even know.
Three and a half years.
Three and a half years ago, the night you were sitting here. I didn't like, yeah, I look at, everything seems, seems longer than it is. I don't know. But I just don't, I don't know. Half of the policies they gave us, I don't think are necessary. That's, that's my, that's my point.
Okay.
Okay.
But I would like to see an OPEB and a stabilization and a free cash policy before June 30th.
Um, I, maybe. I heard everything that you just said, and I agree with you. But I disagree with you, just like you disagreed, um, that there's a bunch of legislation coming out that might address uh, tax title and stuff like that. We have a bunch of really expensive projects.
Opioids, you mean?
Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, opioids. We have a bunch of really expensive projects coming up, where if we pass those policies that mandate having 10% or whatever, we might have to dip below that as we pay for these expensive projects.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I'll work on getting something, but, um.
But if you always say, there's this other project coming along, then what's gonna, it's gonna be easy. People say, well, then we're not gonna put money away for the track this year, we'll catch up next year, and then we'll be 10 years out, and the chocolate need to be replaced, and we won't have any money.
I just wanna put in some more thought, that's all.
I, I totally agree with you on that aspect, Barb, because just, just like the new bridge that's getting put in, okay? Now, th, this bridge is gonna get put in, what, what, uh, upkeep will say, every five years, it needs to be painted, or what? You know, what, to, to keep it from falling down and happen to, you know? That should be a, a thought.
I agree.
In.
We're probably gonna end up in a situation.
Not just 30 years later, we've gotta replace this.
Cause there's so much we'd have to budget for.
I mean, I'll be, I'll be long gone.
Perhaps some policies, we can discuss it once we have.
Ten, maybe.
I appreciate the feedback that I got on these two.
Easy.
By the way, just wanna mention though, really quick, that Barb keeps us really grounded by all the time reminding us that if it's a one-time expenditure, then it should be something like free cash or capital or something like that, and that be careful, like the conversation that we had with, with Olivera and with Samoa, was that, you know, there are a lot of communities that use that money, the Esser money. I've seen schools locally on the news where they created positions, and now they can't, because now they got huge gaps in their budgets, because they can't fund all these positions anymore. And I really have to say thank you to Barbara, because she keeps us grounded all the time and tells us, no, we can't spend this money, because it's not a one-time thing. Or if it isn't a one-time thing, we need to be looking at the general fund and not out of one-time funds.
Agreed.
I think that was a huge school issue, though.
Budget is, they, they totally had the foresight to say, no, we can't fund these positions with that and.
No, and that was a good decision.
I want you for this thing.
Okay.
Just a first reading.
Okay. So, I, I guess just both of them need work, and maybe we're just not even dealing with the tax one, I don't know.
Yeah. I will.
They're tabled till the next, well, Phil made a motion to table for the next meeting, so it's tabled till the next meeting.
Did we vote on it?
I didn't.
You're.
No, we didn't vote on it.
I tabled it.
I think we just tabled it, we didn't vote on it, so.
We need to vote on it.
No, but he said to table it. No, we don't have to vote on it, it's just tabled, yeah.
Yeah, it's tabled, it's tabled.
Okay, next is to amend ordinance 201806, section 54-8, authorize revolving funds by adding a new regional dog officer revolving fund under Mass General Law, chapter 44, section 53E and a half.
So this is for the new regional animal control center? This is just gonna set up an expenditure or funding, yeah, funding will come, or fees will come in, or what source of income will come in, and that they can use that revolving fund for expenditures at the facility, correct?
Correct.
And this is going to be not just for the town of Palmer, right? Because we're, as a regional facility, are we, we're still managing it? So then we'll be taking in funds from the other communities also, and then that'll be going in. Perfect, okay. And that's what this will all be, yeah.
So they all should be creating their own.
No, I think they're giving us all the money.
They give us all the money.
Right.
It's directions from the tower.
I do, did, did you check with the OR if this is allowed for inter-municipal agreements?
Catch that analogy, you know?
With DOR?
Department of Revenue.
Oh, no. I'm just, and I don't know the answer, and I, I, again, I, I was.
I do think, yeah, it's interesting.
I don't, I, I honestly don't know. I don't know the answer to the question, but I think we need to run it by them, because, okay, I'll just give, I'm gonna use the opioids as the example, so we could easily say, we're gonna take, we're gonna make a revolving fund for opioids, we're gonna put the money in, and this is what we're gonna do. And then it's like, no, we can't do that, because without specific legislation that allows you to do something, you can't do it, and I'm just wondering if this is the same way, so.
That's a fair question.
I don't know the answer.
It's clearly written, I, I mean, it's clearly written that it's for the inter-municipal agreement.
Oh, it can be clearly written.
Just isn't allowed, right, isn't allowed.
You might have a hoop that you have to jump through, through the state, is what you're saying.
There might be not a hoop.
Yeah.
Gabriella and I, Gabriella and I did just attend a workshop on inter-municipal agreements, and I'm trying to remember, I don't, they didn't have anything in there about revolving funds.
Yeah, I remember.
I, I think that, you know, again.
I'm sure you can.
No, no, it's a fair question, I don't know the answer.
We don't necessarily have to have a revolving fund. I mean, you can bring in all the, whatever each of the towns is gonna pay for fees to us, or, um, they're part of the agreement of the cost.
Well, there's a lot of different money that comes in as well.
No, I understand, but if, if we're gonna budget, I'm making up the number, $100,000 for everything, then you just have to offset everything but our stuff as a revenue source.
This is how it's done currently.
Right.
Right.
You record the revenue in general fund, as long as the, uh, but, along with the fees that the, um, dog officer collects.
Right.
And it's budgeted.
The thing that I don't know is if we're, um, identifying that revenue source when we set the budget. We do? Yes. Okay. Yes. So I just want clarification from, from the LS that we can actually do this. That would be great.
The other towns, um, either have or in the process of amending, so in their own internal bylaws, they've had the fees that they collect, doing their own animal control in the past, go to their town clerk or whatever. I, it's, um, so they're amending that, so that it will all go to the regional.
So, can we just bring this back? I mean, this is first reading, so, uh, if it's wrong, if we can't do it, then we don't proceed to second reading. If we can, then we can just proceed.
We don't wanna read it, though?
I did.
She did.
I read it.
Oh, okay, I missed that part.
And then what, uh, what were you thinking the annual spending limit was gonna be? I know, we, we don't need it for the ordinance, but I was just wondering.
Says subject to annual town council vote.
I think the number was included in the, in, um, in the current budget draft that we included, so that would be the limit.
Okay, well, we can talk.
And I don't remember the number.
Okay, we can talk about it, we can talk about it, okay.
So there won't be a line item in the budget, right? Is that what this is?
Sounds like there is.
Sounds like there is, but this would replace the line item in the budget, okay.
It would almost be the revolving.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you, Gabriella.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Aside from the assessor, I think, uh, you had the hottest seat.
You too.
Okay, so the next is, um, it's a resolution, um, for repair con, to repair the concrete entrance slab at the library. Ryan is, um, pulling that off the agenda tonight, but we are going to discuss it.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to talk about, so, we had, I need to get a roofer to the library. I need to get a roofer to town hall. Getting roofers has been very tough. Sometimes they, they, they look like they're a big company, and then they show up and they have no equipment, and they've wasted your time. So, uh, I gotta continue to get some roofers. But I did get a roofer to get to the library, um, for a very specific problem. Uh, they've noticed they have a leak. And the leak is in the, their, um, near their main entryway, and it's, so they have this flat portico at the main entrance, and that goes into the main building, so where that portico marries up to the building, that seam, I'm guessing is where the water infiltration is coming in. And then they also have this broader problem of, um, whenever the shingles were done, they never glued the shingles down, they only tacked them down, so the wind's blowing all the shingles off, and the shingles are also getting into the gutters. And so, the contractor that I had up at the library looking at this roof leak said, dollars to doughnuts, this roof leak is what's causing all these cracks in your entryway cement, cause the water's infiltrating underneath the cement pad. So, we can't repair the cement pad. I've already had somebody come out, that was this $19,000 price. But I don't wanna fix that problem if there is a deeper underlying problem, so I gotta explore the source of the water infiltration underneath the pad.
Problem to the problem.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
The question that I had about this is, so if it's just cracks in the concrete pad, like, I understand there's infle, water infiltration and all that, but. but if those were dealt with, why couldn't we just seal the cracks?
Uh, we did. That was part of the um request to the contractors and they said that there is not a way to seal this current this this particular thing, there's not a way to do that. It will, it will continue to deteriorate.
And how many quotes did we get for the job?
Three.
And they were all in a similar price range or?
Oh, yeah.
That was my question. He doesn't have to go up the bid, what's the?
Fifty thousand is the threshold to go up the bid.
That was the number.
Just three quotes.
And the other question I guess I was gonna ask is, from looking at work needing to be done, why is this not being able to be done by our DPW?
What is?
Replacing a cement pad.
I can't answer that that question, um.
I know they're they're very well capable of being able to do a small cement pad like that. I would I would hope.
I think that the issue might be not necessarily the cement pad, but this was gonna be a difficult job because if you could picture the entryway of the library, that portico, all the columns go right onto that pad now. So there needs to be some way to stabilize that portico while they remove and replace the pad. What I think we're gonna end up doing, um again, having to look at the roof of the portico and all that stuff now, is we may end up um putting separate footings under each column and then doing a new concrete entryway pad just slightly behind the column so that the columns are no longer resting on the pad itself.
I would've thought them columns are separate. S- supported separately from, but.
No, they're just right on that cement pad.
Obviously you have a roof leak issue to figure out first.
Right.
So, let's move along, I guess.
Anybody else's questions on that?
No.
New business, anybody? Subcommittee reports? So, um Ryan, I and I I don't remember if you sent this, but I I don't. If you did, I apologize, but at the the sup uh the uh work session, we talked about getting uh a breakdown of the revenue sources for budget subcommittee.
She's working on that. She will have it before Wednesday.
Okay. Can you just um, if we get it via email, that's fine, but can you also have a printed copy for us? Okay. A subcommittee reports?
No.
Town managers' report?
Thank you, Madam President. So our first paving project uh for this uh current paving year uh will be on May 1st and May 2nd. Um, we are, let's see, I thought I put the name of the road in there. Okay, never mind then.
I think it was in the email you sent over.
Yeah, I know, and I I.
It's in my mind's eye, but I can't.
Ah, and now I can't either.
Set, set, central. It's a, it's a side street.
I'll put it on Facebook, how's that? I was trying to update the public on what our new, on what our first paving project would be, but.
Wait, I found, hold on.
So I will just put it on Facebook. Sorry, what?
Beach.
Yeah, beach, yes. Okay, so our first on May 1st will be Beach Street. I don't have the the list of all the other streets that we're doing yet. Uh I guarantee you, they will be picked off of our pavement category index, which is a scientific process we had done uh a couple of years ago that rated all of our roads in town um from the worst to the best, and we are going off of the worst to the best.
I was just gonna ask, don't we have a booklet? Yeah.
It was triage.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's all that I have that I really wanted to pull out of my report, unless there's anything in my report that you guys wanted to talk about.
I had one quick question.
Sure.
And this is being totally ignorant of this whole situation. The 26 tons of baseball infield mix.
Okay.
First of all, Dura Edge, I have no clue, but I'm guessing that's what's required, whatever it's called. This infield mix, but why do we have to go to Boston? There's no local resource for that?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know. I will ask.
Just asking.
I was gonna say, you gotta get the.
We're stealing from Fenway.
The um.
I don't know, just a question. I I figured if there's a local resource, why not use it, but.
Yeah, no, that's a fair question. I will ask the uh, I will ask you.
It's in his town manager report under Public Works.
Yeah, I I mean, I see it, we picked up 26 tons of baseball infield mix from Dura Edge in Boston.
And I guess my second question would be, we physically went to Boston to get this rather than them deliver it? If that was even the case, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd probably, I would expect that that probably did happen. Sometimes it's cheaper to go get, it's cheaper to go get it than to.
Okay. Pay for the.
Probably, probably really is.
I'll find out why we went to, what's Dura Edge?
What? I hate which is.
I'm just thinking, there's gotta be somebody closer than, well, there probably is, I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying, is there anyone closer than Boston?
Times have changed.
I'm just saying, it is different, but I don't know.
I knew, it's probably mixed with clay or some kind of.
It's like a clay athletic.
I'm assuming the funding for that came out of the parks.
We're gonna stop being so gentle on our kids.
Or was it a combination of?
That's a problem.
Okay.
It is.
Ryan, I think you should actually speak to your section here.
I'm sorry, what?
Baseball field.
You should make a statement on here.
With some.
Which one? You have on the.
Code enforcement.
Yeah. I think that would be good.
Oh, Gate Street, okay, yeah, yeah, that's a good point. Yes, it is. Okay, so some folks uh attended one of our meetings recently uh to talk about the conditions that they were concerned about in their neighborhood, which was Gate Street. Um, so we, uh Bill Fenner and the Board of Health staff have been working in that area. Uh, the Gate Street uh duplex uh joint enforcement letters from Bill Fenner um for the junkyard zoning violations, uh the Board of Health for the rest of the trash, uh Gate Street's abandoned trailer, uh that's been issued an unsafe structure order. Uh, the Board of Health has condemned it uh with an order to board it up. And then there, they will start the Massachusetts General Law, chapter 143 process to remove it. Uh, the 143 process is what we used on the Pink House. Uh, same thing for River Street, um you know, trailers, uh trash, RV junked cars. Um, the 501 River Street is actually a a property that the town uh did a seed, uh community development block grant homeowner renovation project, uh but the owner has passed away. So we're allowed to foreclose when folks have those type of loans, still uh due. Um, so we we will uh take tax title of that and uh clean that one up.
Do they have a way though, if, I get, you know, it's an agreement, do they have a way i- if they owe you to 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 pay you off or whatever?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If they were in a position to do so?
Yes, they um they could um enter in agreements with the treasurer. They they, there's a lot of things they could do. This gentleman passed away, so.
Yeah, I'm just saying like if.
He says it's not his problem anyway.
Came up and said, hey, this is what we do.
So you brought it up, the Pink House.
Pink House.
It's still in limbo. The foundation still is there, not filled in yet and the fence is still up and.
So uh DEP still has to come out and do their inspection of that basement. We're waiting on them.
Okay. No schedule? Okay, no, I'm just curious.
They're not communicating any, like distinct timeline to us.
Understood.
The only other question I really had was the change in staff with the Board of Health.
Mm-hmm.
Does that affect or do we have a backfill for the whole regional coordination of all that?
I don't have a backfill for the regional yet. Uh, will more than likely, if it comes to that, work with one of the directors uh in those towns and have them interim fill in. Uh, I do have uh some interviews lined up, so I'm I'm hoping to uh have this be as seamless a transition as possible. I will say that Christina Florence has been uh great and very professional and has offered to uh work on things uh even after uh this week, which is uh her last week. Uh, especially the code enforcement stuff. I I know that uh she and Bill Fenner work very well together. Um, they they kinda have this um good cop, bad cop dynamic down very well. Um, so I think uh she will continue to work and clean up some of the uh stuff that we still have on deck.
Now, if other towns take the leadership role in that, do we lose funds?
I don't think so, no, because we have the agreements are signed. Um, I mean, it might be some type of conversation for however long. I mean, if somebody's in interim for a week, you know, I mean, am I gonna have that conversation? No, probably not.
Any questions on his report?
Nope.
No.
Slaney's correspondence, anyone? Bossers Roundtable?
Yes. So as everybody is aware, the Earth Day, April 22nd in town, where everybody can go to Lalet Field and get bags and clean up their areas of the village along the rivers or the parks or at the conservations or hiking trails or anywhere in town. I would just like to say and hope that everybody takes a minute and just cleans up in front of their own property. Um, even if you can't get out, if you just clean up in front of your own property, picking up trash, I understand that people aren't very nice and they throw things out the windows.
Tired.
Right, I I same here, I live on a busy road and people throw stuff out the window all the time. Um, but every little bit helps. So if just everybody gets out and cleans up their own curb, then it's it's, it makes a huge difference just driving through town, so. That's all. I just ask that everybody does a little bit and and help out and help make our town look awesome. So when people drive through, they can say, wow, this place is really nice, so it helps.
Yeah. To piggyback off of that, I uh spent my morning cleaning up about 50 Easter eggs, the plastic ones that some kids, I'm assuming, decided to just throw off of the, in the side of the road. Um, which is on my walking route in the morning with my dogs. So there was me with my two dogs pulling me in other directions and I was stuffing these plastic Easter eggs in a plastic bag. Um, so yes, I agree. I live on a dead end that is off of a temporary dead end and there, the amount of trash that piles up on my road is just amazing. So I agree, I will be out there picking up trash. So my dog doesn't pick up the trash himself. Um, but also, um, I wanted to say congratulations to the school committee for picking a superintendent candidate. I had the ability to serve on the.
What did they pick? I didn't.
So, um, I have the ability, yes, it is.
Oh, all right, just checking.
I thought everybody knew about this, but okay. So, so his name is Matt Francis. He is the uh currently the Assistant Superintendent of Chickapi Public Schools. Um, I had the opportunity to to meet him in his first interview and um I think, you know, based off of that one interaction, I think he's gonna do an exceptional job for the school district, so I'm very excited for them. And congratulations and welcome to Mr. Francis.
No, I hope he addresses his contract negotiations to them appropriately.
Yes, and doesn't call anybody lady.
Happy to have his back.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's not have a, but not have an East Hampton situation.
Correct. But I'd like to uh piggyback of uh what Counselor Sizer heard and from all the feedback I've gotten on uh the new superintendent, he's a fiscally sound business manager and I think he was uh again, from what I heard, far and away, well qualified on the fiscal end, so I think we're gonna be in super shape. And again, congratulations to the Select Committee and the School Committee for the whole process that they went through.
Anybody else?
I still can't find my Easter egg I had. They're at Jessica's house. Truthfully though, it it was a very nice uh awards thing they had for the the police department and stuff and I hope it, talking to uh because through all the years of growing up, I mean, it probably should've been something that's some type of recognition for him. And my suggestion to the chief is that you have a school resource officer. And I think Mr. Lynch was like one of the first ones to get it named after him. He was, as a kid growing up, a wicked good influence and uh if you know Mr. Lynch, wicked.
Nice guy.
Oh, yeah. So, but yeah, it was very nice and um.
Yeah, and so, no, I was just gonna, again, kinda jump on what Phil just said. It was extremely well attended. And um myself and Phil and Jessica were there, along with Ryan, was a a great host and it was catered and between him and the chief, Senator Olivera was there as well.
Amen.
Todd had another commitment. Oh, Matt, I'm sorry, Matt was sitting right next to me, actually, I apologize for that.
We have, we have.
But yeah, we had uh as well as Eric, the superintendent of Pathfinder and Colleen and Sue North from the Palmer High School, so we were well represented on our side, but the rest was all family and friends and uh law enforcement from the community and it was, again, like Phil said, it was something probably a long time in coming, but they went back five years and a lot of the things I didn't know, which I'm sure we can get into at a later date, but the DART program and our departments into a lot of things they were recognized for, excuse me, on a regional level that um uh I was impressed because, like I said, I wasn't even aware that to the depth that that.
It kinda hit home with me, cause I know when my dad passed, uh I I I'm drawing a blank of the officer's name that actually picked him up off the ground and tried to help him out before the ambulance got there, you know, and there was never any ever recognition as far as that there, so, yeah.
Uh, I I wanted to, that was one of the things I wanted to talk about and I, I mean, can you see if the chief would be okay with, I think that the information that was in our packet, unfortunately, my work schedule made it so that I couldn't attend, but I did read through everything that was attached in our packet and um you know, some of, some of the things that people were recognized for, I had no idea some of, a lot of those things even happened and uh I I think it would be nice if the chief was okay with it to um publicize it in some way, whether it's on the website or um because I do think people get to that recognition for those type of things.
I I know the uh police department doesn't have a Facebook, so maybe if it's shared on ours.
On ours, but also I think.
Yeah, I I.
You'd have to do one.
I have to try to like.
You'd have to do like one a day or something.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say, I can only do screenshots to get onto Facebook, I can't.
A lot.
I know.
Yeah, so I do, I want, I'm doing that, I'm trying to figure out the best way to do it.
Even if you were to create one, like, general Facebook post that links it to the website, where the website contains all of the awards, so just say like, an overall general post, this this event happened, attach some pictures and if you wanna read more about the commendations, follow this link.
Yeah, and I think that's important. And then the other thing, there there's a lot of questions regarding the park, Hernobitz Park, and I think that the town you needs to put something out as to what exactly is going on, what's going there, the timeline. I know the rep director did post something, but not everybody sees those posts. I I, you know, I don't understand how people see some stuff and they don't see other stuff, but that is definitely the way. So I think that if you could post something and then give periodic updates along the way, um, I think that that would be, that would be a good thing.
The only concern I've gotten so far to that entire thing was that we took down good oak trees to make room. People were complaining about that, that the oak trees on the common have been there a long time, so, you know, that was the only concern I had.
We could make some benches out of them.
I don't know where they, I think they, they came in in hours and they came and chucked them out really quick, I heard. They were, they were, they were down and out.
Trees that were coming out.
There were some larger, I said that they were dead, but some people argued that they were still good, but I mean, I'm not a tree expert. Right. Right, but I do know that in the plan, there is a plan to plant more trees, I did say, so I know that that's coming with the um the landscaping, so.
I I just think we need to do a better, a better job of letting people know and they shouldn't have to be like, I drove by, what's going on, type thing.
Have some forethought.
I will steal that guy's drone photos every day.
Yes, he's actually doing a really good job, yes.
Yeah, I do like it, yeah.
Okay, um, we're gonna hold off on the minutes. I wanna talk to you about them, okay?
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Third.
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
And I don't know who hasn't seen this.